Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the -- I'm City Manager Ned Thomas. I apologize for the delay. We're waiting for Mayor Montano. She has had -- been stuck in traffic. So, thank you for your patience, and she will be here soon. Thank you. For everyone, we've opened a few of the seats in the front that were reserved. So if you're standing, please feel free to move. There's some seats here in the front. You're welcome to take those seats if you would like. And some other empty seats over here on the side. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. This is so great. I am so happy to see you all here. It is fantastic. It is fantastic. So, we're going to get started. So, we're going to get started. So, actually, I'm going to call this special meeting of the Milpitas City Council So, actually, I'm going to call this special meeting of the Milpitas City Council of December 10th, of December 10th, 2024, to order. 2024, to order. While the meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, While the meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the City Council meeting in person. oral public comment may only be provided live at the City Council meeting in person. And we will be doing a reorganization tonight. And we will be doing a reorganization tonight. So, the City Council meeting is available for instant translation So, the City Council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with Wordly, in over 50 languages with Wordly, which is an app. which is an app. It's accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays It's accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So, back to today's business. So, back to today's business. City Clerk Guzzetta, please take role. City Clerk Guzzetta, please take role.
Councilmember Barbara Diouf. Councilmember Barbara Diouf.
Here. Here.
Vice Mayor Chua. Vice Mayor Chua.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Leanne. Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Phan. Councilmember Phan.
Present.
Present.
Mayor Montano. Mayor Montano.
And I am here. And I am here. So now, we will stand. So now, we will stand. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. You may be seated. And so now, we will move on to invocation. And so now, we will move on to invocation. So, Councilmember Leanne, we will provide the -- she will provide the invocation. So, Councilmember Leanne, we will provide the -- she will provide the invocation.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. So, tonight, we gather here to a very special moment So, tonight, we gather here to a very special moment to swearing in our newly-elected or re -- the victory of the reelection of our mayor to swearing in our newly-elected or re -- the victory of the reelection of our mayor and our Vice Mayor Evelyn Chua, and our Vice Mayor Evelyn Chua, and also to welcome William Lamb. and also to welcome William Lamb. And congratulations to all of you. And congratulations to all of you. If we can focus in our responsibilities If we can focus in our responsibilities and really looking to shaping the future of Milpitas, and really looking to shaping the future of Milpitas, we do it together, and we will be successful as a whole. we do it together, and we will be successful as a whole. So, I'm looking forward to serving alongside each and every one of you So, I'm looking forward to serving alongside each and every one of you to do great things for Milpitas. to do great things for Milpitas. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Leanne. Thank you, Councilmember Leanne. And so now, we will receive a report of the municipal election results of November 5th, 2024, And so now, we will receive a report of the municipal election results of November 5th, 2024, and adopt a resolution to certify final results of candidates and ballot measure elections. and adopt a resolution to certify final results of candidates and ballot measure elections. So, City Clerk. So, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor Montano and City Council members and members of the public. Good evening, Mayor Montano and City Council members and members of the public. It's my pleasure to present the results of the municipal general election It's my pleasure to present the results of the municipal general election that was conducted on November 5th, 2024. that was conducted on November 5th, 2024. Milpitas voters cast their ballots to elect the mayor to a two-year term Milpitas voters cast their ballots to elect the mayor to a two-year term and two city council members to four-year terms, and two city council members to four-year terms, and decide on Measure J, the Public Services Reauthorization Measure. and decide on Measure J, the Public Services Reauthorization Measure. The Santa Clara County Register of Voters certified the election results on December 5th, 2024, The Santa Clara County Register of Voters certified the election results on December 5th, 2024, as required by California Elections Code. as required by California Elections Code. Tonight, you formalize this by adopting a resolution Tonight, you formalize this by adopting a resolution that confirms the official canvas and declares the results of the election. that confirms the official canvas and declares the results of the election. Next slide. Next slide. Out of 38,836 registered voters in the city of Milpitas, Out of 38,836 registered voters in the city of Milpitas, 26,364 participated in the election, 26,364 participated in the election, resulting in a voter turnout of 67.9%, resulting in a voter turnout of 67.9%, including both in-person and vote-by-mal ballots. including both in-person and vote-by-mal ballots. Next slide. Next slide. Carmen Montano was reelected as mayor with 35.8% of the vote, Carmen Montano was reelected as mayor with 35.8% of the vote, followed in order of votes received by Han Leanne, Anthony Phan, and Voltaire Montemayor. followed in order of votes received by Han Leanne, Anthony Phan, and Voltaire Montemayor. Next slide. Next slide. Evelyn Chua was reelected as councilmember with 41.93% of the vote, Evelyn Chua was reelected as councilmember with 41.93% of the vote, and William Lamb with 27.16%. and William Lamb with 27.16%. Next slide. Next slide. Approved by 80.1% of the votes cast, Approved by 80.1% of the votes cast, Measure J provides approximately $7 million annually Measure J provides approximately $7 million annually for essential services, including public safety, street maintenance, and emergency preparedness. for essential services, including public safety, street maintenance, and emergency preparedness. Next slide. Next slide. It is recommended that the council receive the report of election results and voter turnout It is recommended that the council receive the report of election results and voter turnout and adopt a resolution confirming the official canvas of the election returns and adopt a resolution confirming the official canvas of the election returns and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 5th, 2024. and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 5th, 2024. Thank you to our voters, candidates, and staff for making this process so smooth and successful. Thank you to our voters, candidates, and staff for making this process so smooth and successful. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, City Clerk Guzzetta. Thank you, City Clerk Guzzetta. And so now, we will call for the public comment. And so now, we will call for the public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make any comments? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make any comments? And do we have any speaker cards? And do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor, I have no speaker cards. No, Mayor, I have no speaker cards.
Is there anyone? Is there anyone? Okay. Okay. So now, we will move on to the council discussion and feedback. So now, we will move on to the council discussion and feedback. Is there any discussion from the council members? Is there any discussion from the council members? Okay. Okay. So I will need a motion and a second to accept the results. So I will need a motion and a second to accept the results. So, we have a -- we have Councilmember -- Vice Mayor Chua. So, we have a -- we have Councilmember -- Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Moved to adopt the resolution as stated by City Clerk. Moved to adopt the resolution as stated by City Clerk.
And I second that. And I second that. Okay. Okay. Now, we will call for the motion. Now, we will call for the motion. Call for the vote, I mean. Call for the vote, I mean.
Councilmember Barbara Diouf. Councilmember Barbara Diouf.
Aye. Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua. Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Leanne. Councilmember Leanne.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Phan. Councilmember Phan.
Aye. Aye.
Mayor Montano. Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. And I am an aye. And thank you for that. And thank you for that. And so now, we will move on to presentation to outgoing council member and remarks. And so now, we will move on to presentation to outgoing council member and remarks. City Manager. City Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ned Thomas, the City Manager here in Milpitas. I'm Ned Thomas, the City Manager here in Milpitas. Thank you, Mayor Montano, and members of the council and assembled guests today. Thank you, Mayor Montano, and members of the council and assembled guests today. We have a few special guests that I would like to introduce before we start. We have a few special guests that I would like to introduce before we start. I hope that I haven't missed anyone. I hope that I haven't missed anyone. If I do, please let yourself be known. If I do, please let yourself be known. Let me start by acknowledging our former mayor, Jose Estevez, here in the audience. Let me start by acknowledging our former mayor, Jose Estevez, here in the audience. Also, former councilmember Armando Gomez. Also, former councilmember Armando Gomez. I believe I saw him come in. I believe I saw him come in. Raise your hand. Raise your hand. There we go. There we go. Also, we will have some presentations a little bit later. Also, we will have some presentations a little bit later. From Otto Lee's office, we have Taiboo. From Otto Lee's office, we have Taiboo. His office. In his office. Thank you. Thank you. And also, from Assemblymember Alex Lee's office, Matthew Jorgens. And also, from Assemblymember Alex Lee's office, Matthew Jorgens. I believe Matthew is also a council member in the city of Newark. I believe Matthew is also a council member in the city of Newark. So, we welcome him here tonight. So, we welcome him here tonight. We have from the Alum Rock School District Board, Andres Quintero. We have from the Alam Rock School District Board, Andres Quintero. And also, from our own Milpitas School Board, Trustee Anun Naka. And also, from our own Milpitas School Board, Trusty Anun Naka. And also, former San Jose Vice Mayor Madison Nguyen, I believe I saw. And also, former San Jose Vice Mayor Madison Nguyen, I believe I saw. And from Congressman Ro Khanna's office, Nicole Waring. And from Congressman Ro Khanna's office, Nicole Waring. And I also see in the audience a number of our city commissioners. And I also see in the audience a number of our city commissioners. I won't name you all by name. I won't name you all by name. They'll be here all night. They'll be here all night. But if you want to raise your hands, please let us know. But if you want to raise your hands, please let us know. We want to acknowledge and express our appreciation for your service in the city. We want to acknowledge and express our appreciation for your service in the city. We have our Planning Commission Chair, Mercedes Albana. We have our Planning Commission Chair, Mercedes Albana. Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right. So, without further delay, let me just say that this evening, So, without further delay, let me just say that this evening, before we seat the new council, before we seat the new council, we want to recognize our outgoing council member, Anthony Phan, we want to recognize our outgoing council member, Anthony Phan, who has served with great dedication for two terms on the Milpitas City Council. who has served with great dedication for two terms on the Milpitas City Council. So, Councilmember Phan, if you could join me down here. So, Councilmember Phan, if you could join me down here. I promise you, it's a -- we'll recognize you and not roast you. I promise you, it's a -- we'll recognize you and not roast you. So, Councilmember Phan, as you all know, So, Councilmember Phan, as you all know, has been a voice of progress on the council has been a voice of progress on the council and a strong advocate for our residents, our city staff, and the community as a whole. and a strong advocate for our residents, our city staff, and the community as a whole. As he concludes his time on the dais, As he concludes his time on the dais, we want to express our appreciation for his contributions to the city of Milpitas we want to express our appreciation for his contributions to the city of Milpitas and express our heartfelt gratitude for his service. and express our heartfelt gratitude for his service. Thank you, Councilmember Phan. Thank you, Councilmember Phan. So, the city traditionally presents a United States flag to our outgoing council members. So, the city traditionally presents a United States flag to our outgoing council members. This flag was flown over our Civic Center earlier this month This flag was flown over our Civic Center earlier this month in recognition of Councilmember Phan's unwavering commitment to the residents of Milpitas. in recognition of Councilmember Phan's unwavering commitment to the residents of Milpitas. This year, we have a new audiovisual system in the chambers. This year, we have a new audiovisual system in the chambers. So, we want to show that off a little bit. So, we want to show that off a little bit. And we have a short video presentation to highlight the ceremony And we have a short video presentation to highlight the ceremony for retiring the flag for Councilmember Phan. for retiring the flag for Councilmember Phan. If you would please join that. If you would please join that. We'll have the video. We'll have the video. Thank you, everyone. It is my honor as City Manager to present Councilmember Anthony Phan with his United States flag. Thank you, Councilmember Phan, for your service. I will have Councilmember Phan make some remarks in a moment. But first, we have several presentations and certificates of recognition from county and state offices. So, first, let me call up Nicole Waring from Congressman Ro Khanna's office, who is here tonight to present a special certificate to Councilmember Phan. Nicole.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Congressman Ro Khanna, it's my honor to be here today to recognize and celebrate the outstanding service of outgoing Councilmember Anthony Phan to the city of Milpitas. Councilmember Phan's leadership and commitment to his community have made a lasting impact on Milpitas, as well as his dedication to public service, coupled with his deep understanding of the issues that matter most to local residents. As Councilmember Phan moves on to the next chapter of his journey, we wish him continued success in all his endeavors. Milpitas is fortunate to have had him as a dedicated public servant, and we look forward to seeing the positive change he will continue to bring to our region.
Next up, we have Matthew Jorgens from Assemblymember Alex Lee's office. Oh, I'm sorry. We have actually our Assemblymember Alex Lee, who is here to bring the presentation himself. Welcome, Alex Lee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Assemblymember Alex Lee, proudly representing Milpitas in the California State Legislature. I want to join the many Milpitanians, friends, and family in honoring Councilmember Anthony Phan's great dedication and love for Milpitas, especially as Milpitas is my hometown. I'm really -- would just say that I'm very proud of you, Anthony, for your incredible dedication to Milpitas through many challenging instances, through the pandemic, and especially for choosing Milpitas to be your home to your two wonderful, beautiful babies and raising them here in Milpitas. You have shown your commitment to the city and your true love for the city and making it a better place so that your two beautiful babies can grow up in a great Milpitas that you have always envisioned. So, thank you for your credible service. And on behalf of the California State Assembly, I'm going to give you this commendation. But I want to tell you that I'm very proud of what you've done, Anthony. I'm very proud to call you my friend. Thank you.
And next, I believe we have Taiboo from Supervisor Alex Lee's -- or, excuse me. Just had Alex say -- from Otto Lee's office, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Taiboo Nguyen. I'm from Supervisor Lee's office. But tonight, I will be representing the whole Board of Supervisors because the board commendation is signed by five board members. We want to present the board commendation to thank you, Anthony, for his dedication and service to improve the quality of life for the resident of Milpita. But Milpita is part of our district of the county. So, we want to present the board commendation.
So, I believe that's all the certificates and recognition that we have, unless I've missed anyone. Just checking. And if not, without further ado, I'd like to have Councilmember -- invite Councilmember Phan to make a few remarks.
Wow. Thank you. I wasn't planning to get this emotional. And I am losing a lot of my train of thought. I think I'm going to try my best to say something concise. But really, it's been the honor of my life representing Milpitas. Thank you for the journey, whether you've supported me or not. I want to congratulate Mayor Carmen Montano. I want to congratulate Mayor Carmen Montano. And I wish you well. Your success is the city's success. I had a whole speech prepared. I was sworn in eight years ago, and I didn't really get a chance to make remarks. As I leave, I reflect back on a lot of the amazing things that we've accomplished together. We've accomplished so much. We've overcame so much. And I think it speaks volume to the strength of our city as a community. My family can't be here today, but, you know, I want to thank my family for being supportive of the sacrifices and their sacrifices that they've made to allow me to serve over the last eight years. And I want to thank Milpitas firefighters, Milpitas police officers. You guys are the backbone of our community. Thank you for keeping our community safe. Thank you to the voters of Milpitas for passing Measure J, which is going to allow Milpitas to thrive in the years to come. Thank you, Ned, for your leadership, for stepping up, for continuing to be a leader for our community. And I wish you all the best. Yeah, I wasn't really expecting to say much, to be honest. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay. We will switch gears a little bit. As we honor the conclusion of one chapter, we're now turned to the beginning of another, and it's time to welcome and celebrate the individuals who will carry forward the responsibility of leadership for our city. So I will now introduce the newly elected and re-elected officials to be sworn into their respective offices, along with those who will be administering the oath of office this evening. And we welcome everyone to join us in this momentous occasion. So let us begin with the swearing in of Mayor Carmen Montano. Administering the oath for Mayor Montano will be her granddaughter, Dominique Walker. Mayor Montano and Dominique, please come forward.
Welcome, everyone. I know we are, some of us got stuck in traffic, and so I'm just thankful you're all here from the bottom of my heart. And I want to introduce my granddaughter. This is JoJo. Her real name is Dominique, but we call her JoJo, so. Okay. So you're going to have to say this, and then I will. Yeah. Oh, no, you just, you say it. I state your name. Do you remember where to stop?
Yeah.
Okay. So you raise your right hand. Say. Not me. So say you raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Repeat after me.
Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Carmen Montano, do solemnly swear that I will defend and protect the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That's where you said to stop.
Okay. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Amen. Okay. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. So that's, this is my granddaughter, and she goes to Milpitas High School. Thank you so much, JoJo. Thank you. So I would like to say a few words. Thank you, everyone, for being here. So good evening, friends, family, and guests. As your mayor, I want to take this time to acknowledge my family, who are here to celebrate with me my second two-year term in office, serving this great city of Milpitas. I want to acknowledge my daughter, Rosie, my grandkids, Liberty, JoJo, and Christopher. And I also want to acknowledge my brothers, Tony, Jesse, and my sister, Grace, and Philip, who came all the way from Austin, Texas, to be here with us. So thank you so much for being here. And I also want to thank the dignitaries for being here that our city manager has mentioned earlier. And I also want to commend and thank all the union representatives and all of the staff. And we have our chief, Jared Hernandez, and Jason Shunover, and all the departments in the city of Milpitas. So the people have spoken, and they want their mayor to be the same mayor and to be, to honor you and to serve the citizens of Milpitas. And as I mentioned, I have been in Milpitas for over 50 years. Went to school here, my kids, and then now my grandkids. So we are a city where people want to feel safe and enjoy life. We commend our public safety for being in partnership with the community, along with all our city departments, as I mentioned. So as your mayor, my mandate is to ensure our city is safe, well-maintained, where people can thrive, working with our schools, and take pride to call Milpitas their home. The people have trusted us to do that. So thank you for being here to witness the inauguration of my reelection as mayor once again. I am honored, I am humbled, to be your mayor for the next two years. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Montano, and again, congratulations. Next, we move to the swearing in of Councilmember Evelyn Chua. Administering the oath for Councilmember Chua will be her granddaughter, Anna Lynn Bowie. Councilmember Chua and Anna Lynn, sorry, Anna Lynn, please come forward.
This is my granddaughter, Anna Lynn Chua Bowie. She came all the way from far, far away, Santa Barbara.
Raise your right hand. I, Evelyn Chua, do solemnly swear.
I, Evelyn Chua, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Good job, Anna Lynn. Thank you all for coming this evening. I'm so blessed and grateful, relieved, and excited for all of you to be here this evening. Grateful for the overwhelming support of the Milpitas community. Blessed because I'm surrounded with friends, families. My daughter is here, Wayleen, all the way from Saratoga. And my granddaughter, you met, Anna Lynn, and her boyfriend, Brooks. He's his family now, so. So I'm really, I'm blessed because everybody's here, together with the council members, and also the staff. They've been supportive of me for the last four years. So I'm just relieved that the election turned out to be because I will feel bad for all the supporters, for their hard work during the election, if it turned out to be the other way. So thank you so much. And it's been an honor serving you for four years. I'm ecstatic to come back with a solid city governance experience, with inherent leadership, with core value of integrity, and proven and measurable results. As my commitment to you during the campaign, I will strengthen the public safety, reinforce fiscally-conservative city, initiate community engagement group to bring together the city towards the people. That's my goal for the next four years, including businesses, retention, expansion, and acquisition. And also, I want to initiate, address the needs of the seniors, the youth, the businesses, and the residents of Milpitas. I'm excited and looking forward to, I'll give you three examples of what I'm excited about. We got this grant from Congressman Ro Khanna, $3 million. It's going, I call it Going Electric Milpitas. So it's grants that will give at least 1,000 households to convert their appliances to, from gas to electric. So we're working on that, and that should be coming up soon. I'm also excited. Part of my initiative last four years, I created the Community Housing Commission to address the housing issues in our city. So I'm excited about that. And of course, I'm ecstatic to explore more initiatives that I have in mind. Thank you so much for your continued support and trust and confidence. And I would like to share with you some of the accomplishments that we have accomplished working together. And it's a one-minute video. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
As I mentioned, we have a fancy new, very expensive AV system. And we still have a few bugs to work out, obviously. Hopefully, they'll get it working in just a moment. Sorry, Vice Mayor. It's a lovely video. You'll enjoy it.
Some of the accomplishments that we've done. Some of the accomplishments is the construction of the Fire Station 2 on Yosemite and South Park Victoria, servicing the community around the area. ADU, we added more ADUs in the last three years. And actually, we doubled ADUs. That's one of my initiatives as well. And one thing that I'm very proud of is the opening of the Senior Center during Saturdays, which is being patronized by a lot of seniors. And there, to combat crimes, we did the catalytic converter grants. Daniel, are you ready? I'm running out of things to say here. Delano Manon, renaming of the Delano Manons. We strengthened the LAVIUS ordinance to make it stricter. What else? Oh, small C. We granted to about 340 businesses in Milpitas $5,000 to, from the ARPA fund to help them not just survive, but prosper, our small businesses. And we gave an additional grant to small businesses of 1,700 to about 60 small businesses here in Milpitas. We also have the Safe Zone, where you can exchange your merchandise when you're selling online. We have that right there at the police station. What else, Ned? Is it? I can't remember anything. Is Daniel, Daniel, is it going to be ready? I guess not, right? Yeah, we'll do it later if we can. Thank you all so much. And again, thank you for the continued support, confidence, and trust in me. Looking forward and ecstatic for the next four years. Thank you all.
I think the IT department just had their budget cut. We won't be that mean. No, we, I understand it'll take just a few minutes, and then we'll play that after. But let's move forward. Thank you, Councilmember Chua, and congratulations. Finally, last but not least, we will proceed with the swearing in of our new council member, William Lamb. So administering the oath for Councilmember Lamb will be his wife, Cecile Lamb. And if you would both please come forward and administer the oath. Councilmember Lamb and his wife, Cecile.
Raise your, yeah, raise your right hand. I state your name.
William Lamb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasions.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
And the duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Thank you, everyone, for coming here. Thank you. Thank you all the voters who voted for me. Thank you to all the supporters who believe in me and help me along the way. And I want to name a couple of people. They really. They really helped me in the backgrounds. Ling, she's over there, and Vicky. They helped me quite a bit along the way. I really appreciate your help. And thank you to all the residents who allowed me to put my sign at your front yard. This is really amazing journey for me. Since I am not a well-known person, so I have no volunteer to help me during campaigning. But I have the will and determinations. I walk five to seven miles every day to go from door to door and try to reach as many households as I can. To all the voters of Milpitas, a big thank you. I also like to take this opportunity to thank my daughter, my wife, and her family for their support that they have given me. When she get off work every day, she help me to pass out flyers. Without her support, I don't think I can be here. I'm so honored to be here today. I believe our community holds great promise for growth and change. I understand the importance of public safety, improving our quality of life here in Milpitas, and managing the city budget responsibly. I am prepared to address challenges head-on. I believe in a transparent government that value diverse viewpoint and focus on improving infrastructures to create a more vibrant Milpitas. Together, we can build a better community where business can drive, youth can succeed, and family can feel secure. Thank you.
We invite you to take your, invite Councilmember Lamb to join the council on the dais in his seat. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations again to Mayor Montano, Councilmember Chua, and Councilmember Lamb. Your commitment to serving the city of Milpitas inspires us all, and we look forward to your leadership, to the leadership that you will provide. So this concludes the ceremonial swearing-in portion of tonight's meeting. Before I turn the time back over to Mayor Montano, let me invite everyone downstairs to join us in the City Hall Rotunda and Lobby for a community reception with music, refreshments, and cake to honor our new council and this very important moment in our city's history. This year, we have been celebrating the 70th Platinum Anniversary of the city of Milpitas since our founding in 1954. So tonight will be somewhat of a conclusion to that. We held a similar reception back at the end of January to open up the celebration of our 70th year. So please join us downstairs for refreshments and some music. So Mayor, you will need to recess the meeting for the reception, and then the council will reconvene back here in the chambers at 7:00 PM for their regular business meeting. I'll turn the time back over to Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Let me not forget, we have the video teed up.
Oh, you got it back on? Okay, great.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's worth the wait. It's gonna be great. So, and then I'll turn the time back over to Mayor Montano.
Test, test, testing, test.
Oh, is that sound going?
Test this. ...
Okay, this meeting is called to order.
Hey, Michael, how you feeling? Good?
Thank you. That's great. Okay, so now we are in the phase four for the elected new vice mayor. And recommendation is to...
Mayor Montano, before we continue, we need to take roll again.
Okay, go ahead. So we're gonna take roll. Let's make sure we're all here.
Councilmember Barbara Deal.
Where's Mr. Lamb?
He's coming.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait till you, Mr. ...
Here.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb. We will note that he, when he arrives. Councilmember Lienn.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna wait for Councilmember Lamb to come up to the dais. Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is really great. Okay, Councilmember Lamb, you are seated.
Come on up.
Okay, celebrate good times, come on. All right, thank you so much for being here. So now I am going to introduce and make a recommendation for, to appoint the vice mayor. And I would like to appoint Councilmember Barbara Deal as the new vice mayor. Is there a ... Okay, so I have made a motion to recommend Vice, Councilmember Barbara Deal for vice mayor. And we have a second from Vice Mayor Chua. And now we will do public comment. Is there any comments from the public?
I have no public speaker cards, mayor.
Anybody from the public? The wife of Gary Barbara Deal doesn't want to say anything? Okay, we're gonna move on. All right, so let's call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Lienn.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Mayor, if, yeah, if we, so if you don't mind, well, thank you.
So we're gonna switch seats now.
We will change seats. So the vice mayor will sit next to the mayor. And then the seats go, if you maybe, if you, there you go, the...
So we have...
The councilmembers can choose by seniority. So it would, first, Councilmember Chua may choose her seat of the three that are remaining.
We just move over, yeah.
Is that what you're doing? Okay, that's fine. Our IT department is going to fix the nameplates. And we can continue while they're doing the, changing the nameplates. I think we're fine if everyone is, once everyone is seated, then we can start again.
So thank you. And I always believe that we should rotate so everyone can, you know, people can have an opportunity to serve in different capacities. So congratulations. Would you like to make a comment? Okay, are you sure? Where are you at? Right there. But you're gonna have to press that button.
Briefly, thank you, Mayor, for the trust that you put in me and the rest of the council. Rest assured, nothing will change. We will decide for what is right for the city. Each of us will have an independent voice and vote, and that will always be respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Barbara Deal. Thank you for that. Okay, now let's move on, oh, we have a comment from Councilmember Chua. Got it? You have to press that, there.
Congratulations to our new vice mayor, Gary Barbara Dealio. All the best, all the best. And also, I wanna thank personally Mayor Montano for giving me an opportunity to serve as vice mayor. And it's a good practice to rotate, to mentor, and also to prepare other council members for future duties, and I do appreciate that. And thank you all for your support all these four years, and and we're looking forward and excited for the next four years. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for your service, thank you for taking on that role. And so now, is there anyone else that wants to make any more comments? If not, we will move on to the public forum. So members of the public are invited to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So please note that oral public may only be provided at the city council meeting in person, and public forum will be limited to two minutes. So is there any speaker cards from the city clerk?
I believe we have Michael Tsai, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Michael Tsai, welcome to the dais. Or to the podium, rather, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This new council, I think it's an auspicious night for Milpitas. My name is Michael Tsai, I served on the school board before, was running up for city council, and I'm just so thrilled with the election results tonight. I followed the election quite closely, I almost ran myself, and I looked at how everybody campaigned. You know, in our democracy, we want everyone to campaign clean and fair. Not everyone did, but everyone who won tonight at the dais ran a clean, strong campaign, so I'm very glad that the people who campaigned clean won, and we know that they're gonna run a clean, fair government. So that's really wonderful. Again, congratulations, Carmen Montano, Evelyn Chua, and William Lamb. Secondly, I did get a lot of questions about my previous remarks at the previous council meeting. The outgoing council member, Anthony Fan, did admit to me that it was unfortunately Han Liang who manipulated him into taking certain actions. I was getting a lot of questions about that, so I just wanted to make that clear. Finally, I do especially want to commend William Lamb. Back when I was on the school board, he actually applied to serve on the school board. I think he was a very committed community member and public servant. And when he applied, I got a lot of phone calls as a school board member from other people telling me to treat him unfairly in the appointment process, and biased against him, and I told them, no, I'm not going to. And I think he saw in the end, the real way to do it is to stand up and run yourself. So this is actually the culmination of a long journey, which I'm incredibly proud of, and I know William Lamb is gonna do a great job, and we're behind him. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Tsai. Is, are there any other persons that would like to make any public comments?
I have no other public speaker cards, mayor.
Okay, great, so thank you. Moving on to the announcements of conflict of interest and campaign contributions, we have our city attorney, Michael Mutulapasi.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you, Mayor, and each member of the city council, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
I still go first, Susan? None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
I further ask you, Mayor Montano, and the Milpita City Council, to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicant for the development project on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Let the record reflect, there are no reported conflicts.
Thank you, City Attorney Mutulapasi. And so now we're moving on to the reading of the city code of conduct. Are there any members here, councilmembers, that would like to take on that role? We have we have Councilmember Chua. Did I turn it off?
Thank you, Mayor. Milpita City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous, model stability, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue, not the person, refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to the agenda items, separate governing from campaigning. Council speaks with one voice after making policies on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua. So now we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any, does anyone have any changes to, before we make a motion? If not, then we will call for a motion in a second. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the agenda? We have Councilmember Lynn that would like to- Is it on?
No.
There.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Lynn to approve the agenda, and a second by Councilmember Chua. So now we'll call for the motion.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Sorry. For the vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you. And now we will move on to the consent calendar. As staff, do you have any comments, city manager?
I have one comment on the consent calendar tonight, Mayor. We would like to move item C-10. We will bring that back to the first meeting in January, which will be January 7th.
Okay. Okay, so that one, do we have to vote on that now, or just? No, okay.
I think we, we'll just defer it.
Okay, we'll defer that one, okay.
One other item is, the city attorney may need to weigh on this, there, what, item C-6 is the approval of the meeting minutes for December 3rd, and I, I'm not sure what the rule is for a new council member to vote on those minutes if he was not part of the meeting.
Generally, the new council member would not vote on those minutes. Unless he had watched the meeting on video, and/or had some other reason to be familiar with the meeting.
I believe-
City Attorney and City Manager-
Attended the meetings, so-
Yes, he did attend the meeting.
So you can vote if you'd like to, because you were here. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and come, public comment. Is there any comments from the public on this matter?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Anyone from the public? Okay, so now we will call for the vote. Actually, a motion, and then a second, sorry. We have Councilmember Chua. Is that on?
There you go. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna clarify, the city manager is pulling 6/9, is that correct?
C-10.
C-10.
C-10. And C-10 and C-9.
C-6.
C-9 is-
C-9, C-10, and C-9 is-
C-9 is okay, it's the, it's reappointments to the planning commission.
Planning? Right.
Three, yeah.
Okay. So I move, I move to approve the consent calendar. And, okay.
It would be with the deferral of item C-10 to January 7th.
Okay. I moved to approve the consent calendar with the deferral of C-10.
Okay, is there a second? We have Councilmember Leanne.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Councilmember Chua, and seconded by Councilmember Leanne. So now we will call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Okay, so the changes for the consent calendar have been approved. So move on to leadership and support services.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item tonight for council consideration. This is the introduction of an ordinance to make minor corrections and clarifications and updates to the municipal code, and we have our assistant city manager, Matt Cano, here to make a brief presentation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager. Can I have the slides, please? So go ahead and get started while we're waiting for the slides, so, next slide, please. So, as background, on December 12th, 2023, the mayor and city council approved the, approved combining the Departments of Engineering and Public Works for operational efficiency and customer service delivery. On June 4th, 2024, as part of this annual budget approval, the mayor and city council approved the deletion of the Building, Safety and Housing Department, and shifting the responsibilities and offices and staff within those departments to the city manager's office, except for the code enforcement team, which was shifted over to the planning department, and defunding of the deputy city manager position. Next slide, please. These ongoing changes, just as a reminder, were approved in the budget, next slide, please. To reorganize functions within the city to further efficiency and collaboration amongst departments, focus on the highest priority customer service needs, and to, most importantly, maximize our efficiency and service delivery to our residents. Next slide, please. Because of this, changing the names of, consolidating Public Works and Engineering, removing the Building, Safety and Housing as a department within our organization, we needed to make sure our municipal code was accurate, and the current municipal code does still carry the names of those departments, and there are some departments from many years ago, actually, that are still listed in the Muni code. So we just took, we took this opportunity to update the Muni code, and the update was solely focused on fixing those old department and, and classification names. There will be future likely discussions about other, other changes to the Muni code, but this action really is just focused on making sure that the organization that you all approved in last year's budget is reflected accurately in the municipal code. This item needs to be a public hearing, because we are making changes to the municipal code, and that's why we're giving the presentation to you today. So next slide, please. Our recommendation is, following the city attorney's reading of the title, move to waive the first reading beyond the title and introduce ordinance number 315, amending various sections of the municipal code to make corrections, clarifications, minor updates, and modifications. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor. Any questions?
That was really quick.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, so so we'll call on for public comment.
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on the item that was just discussed by staff? Okay, and so now we will ask the city attorney to read, allow the ordinance title. Any discussion from the city council? Seeing none, we'll have the city attorney read, allow the ordinance title.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to make corrections, clarifications, and minor updates, and modifications to the Milpitas municipal code.
Thank you, City Attorney. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion to to go ahead and introduce the ordinance, and make, to make corrections and clarifications for these minor updates. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Vice Mayor Barbadeo. Say now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye, thank you. Okay, we did that. So now it's time for announcements and future agenda items. City manager, any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick wishing everyone a happy holidays, as this will be our last meeting of this year, and we look forward to seeing you again in the new year. The next meeting will be held on January the 7th.
Thank you for that information.
I, I should note, too, that we will have our traditional city hall closure between Christmas and New Year's, but we will be back in business on January, Thursday, January 2nd, after the holidays. The last day before that will be Monday, January 23rd, and then we'll be closed through the holidays. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And so we, do we have any comments from our city council? And we have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank staff for the preparation for tonight's swearing-in ceremony, and also the honoring a departing council member. So thank you so much to everybody, good job. And next time, can you please add more food? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome to our new council member, Mr. Councilmember William Lamb.
Thank you. So I, I'd like each, each, each council member to say something, I think it was, it would be just, you know, start off the new year with council member saying something, each, each one of us. So let's have Councilmember Barbara Deal, I mean, Vice Mayor Barbara Deal, say something.
Well, looking forward in the next four years for the new elected council members, and looking forward for the next two years, and the next two years of us sitting council member, we always, we always make sure that we serve the city. The trust that the public has entrusted us through their votes, a representation of the democratic process is enough, or strong enough, to encourage us as decision-makers of the city to vote and to decide for what's best. We hope that the years going forward, we forward with the city of Milpitas, we make sure that nothing, no personal interest, no third interest would affect the way we decide for our city. This is where we raise our children, this is where we sleep, our houses are here, continue to support our public safety, and make Milpitas thrive more for the generations to come. So that's the pledge. I, I hope that the whole council's pledge is the same, the pledge to move the city safer and forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And next, we have Councilmember Leanne. Would you like to say a few, few words? Would you like to say some few words? Councilmember Leanne. Leanne.
So now we have Leanne and Lamb, so I just wanna make sure. Well, I want to congratulate the three wonderful council and mayor again. This is a moment with great pride and big responsibility as you step into the role that shaped the future of our community. Obviously, your hard work and commitment have brought you here, and we are confident that we will serve well together for the greater of Milpitas for the upcoming years. So congratulations again, and I wanna wish each and every one in our whole city a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much, that was beautiful. Next, we will have Councilmember Lamb. Let me see, where are you at? We have, oh, you're not, oh, there you are, okay. Your picture's not on here yet. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to be here. We're looking forward for the next four years to work with, for, with bright people, working with Mayor and my colleague, City Council. We want to do some good here in Milpitas. My top three focus on the next four year will be public safety, quality of life in Milpitas, and I want to look at the budget more carefully and make sure we are doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Appreciate your points that you made. I would like to, in this meeting, by saying thank you, everyone, all my colleagues, I wanna thank all the staff for working hard, and I'm very confident that we all, each and every one of us, agree with you. Public safety is number one, that, because that's our first priority, is to make sure that we keep our public safe. The other thing is, I want to wish everyone a beautiful holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you all the staff for all your hard work. And I wanna thank administrative, the City Manager, and Michael, and Suzanne for all your hard work, and also all the administrative staff for everything you've done. And just wanna emphasize that we are here to do the people's business. We are here, we have the people's trust. I mean, they passed Measure J. I mean, that says a lot, by 75%. That's a lot. Oh, 80%, that is awesome. So, see, right there, that tells you that the people trust us with the finances to, to make sure that we keep our city safe and we maintain the city. And what I look forward to in the next couple of years is having the respect, respect for one another. I mean, we, we, we don't always agree, but we, we agree to disagree, and having that respect is, is paramount for us to work together. I wanna thank each and every one of you, and again, Happy Holidays. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Sorry. If anyone would like to take a poinsettia home with you, these, we're, this is our last meeting for the December, so anyone in the audience or any of the members of the council would like a poinsettia, please take them.